Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, first applicant is 125 South Greenbush Road Site Plan, DB-19-7. Please step outside the booth. Yes, sir, Mr. Brenner.
Okay, everyone sign in. Maybe towards, uh... They'll be identified themselves, the board will know. Sure, so Lawrence Scott, uh, Lieutenant Scott Roberts. He's the architect on the project.
John Collins, major consulting traffic.
Donald Brenner, attorney.
Steve Sparrago, professional engineer for the county.
Jake Rodrigo, property manager.
Uh, before we do that, I just want to let you know, uh, we do not have the force of the offer, so if the applicant wishes to have this, uh, recorded, it's being recorded on the camera, uh, but if you want something else, then we will oppose it for that reason to another time. So, I'm something I...
Uh, we'll be all right, but we would like a, uh, copy of the film.
Is that you'd have to work out the voting for?
We will.
For the town attorney or... I vote by big words.
Okay, um, this project was before the board about six or seven months ago, and at that time, the board was interested as to the traffic situation, which was brought to their attention. Uh, the applicant hired a traffic consultant who ran a traffic study of, I believe you all have copies of the traffic study, which indicated that this project would do minimal effect on the Greenbush Road month situation. So, what we'd like to do, we'd like to review the project again, just to describe it to you. We'll have the traffic engineer give us a report, and then we'll reopen questions from the board. So, I think the first thing we'll do is review the project. And, and what we're gonna do is we'll try to consolidate it all as one, even though you're only called as one, but it's really, all the, all the comments really related similar on both projects. Thank you.
Mr. Brenner, other questions, sir? So, the purpose of the meeting is primarily a clarification and a report on just the traffic, in addition to the report, is that correct?
Please. The purpose of the meeting is to review the traffic reports the board wanted to know about, and then we'd like to proceed with the project, so we can go to the zoning board because there are certain...
Okay, which is what I heard from Mr. Mandel, who is not here. This review of the district only really with traffic. And that, that was misinformation that I received?
I don't know what Mr. Mandel said, I'm just telling you what I've...
I don't know, you weren't...
That, that doesn't mean that the board is going to grant it. We would like to present the case and see what the board's gonna do.
I'm taking it very much so.
So, I'll move over, um, 125, 125 of Greenbush briefly, and just tie it into 155 of Greenbush as it's all associated to two projects, if that's okay. Uh, there's an extension of the, uh, 125 of Greenbush is an extension proposed of the existing 268,000 square feet warehouse building for an additional 147,000 square feet of warehouse. Uh, we provided a partner around the building onsite. Uh, a lot of this redevelopment in the front, uh, north and south of the building. Uh, some, some new, uh, parking in the rear that we're proposing to, uh, provide as much parking as possible onsite that we feel is necessary. Um, for the 155 Greenbush site, there's a new warehouse of 126,018 square feet proposed, uh, also with the new parking areas, some redevelopment. Uh, we provided, uh, detention basins in front of both buildings. We also have underground, uh, detention in the rear of the buildings. Uh, we've been through the process with the town engineers, and we have a, uh, approval with conditions, uh, for the drainage, and so I think we're ready to proceed. I'm gonna hand it off to John Collins to discuss the traffic.
Let's do something else.
Anyone who'd like to add a description to the report?
Uh, I have the enviable task to try to explain what the, uh, traffic conditions are now and what they would be in the future. And I'm going to, uh, take the reports in sequence that I will prepare and what was asked of us at various points in time. The first report was prepared, it was a traffic impact study submitted to the board, uh, and dated July of 2019.
Hold the microphone down.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Hold the mics, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have a traffic study, uh, that was, uh, traffic impact study that considered the, uh, trips to be generated by the future existing and future uses on this site. Uh, it was dated July of 2019, and it was based upon, uh, information that was obtained during a series of traffic counts in the area, uh, in March of, March of that year, so March of 19. Uh, what we did in that study, we took into account the existing traffic volumes over there with the current warehouse use, and we expanded those to include what would be the, uh, operating conditions of the various driveways and intersections in the area with the expanded warehouse uses that is called for on the site plan that Mr. Sparrago just talked about. Uh, currently, there are two access points to the site. Uh, there would be a future third point located somewhat to the north on, um, Greenbush Road. Uh, however, that access driveway will be limited to passenger cars only and will be designed to accommodate right turns in only. So, if you're traveling north on Greenbush Road, you could enter. If you're traveling south, you could enter if you wanted to make almost a 180-degree turn of the driveway. But that was the traffic report in July, and that was reviewed by the town and reviewed by the county, the public planning, and the public highways. It should be noted that we will need approval by both the town and as well as the county, especially the county highway department, because they control Greenbush Road, and any site driveway on behalf of that road will have to be granted under a permit from, from them. Two things that they talked about in their review was, uh, the, uh, type of warehouse in use, because there are different types of warehouse used. Uh, the type of warehouse used that we're proposing is a continuation of the, uh, use that's currently on site, the expansion of that, um, uh, into the new building. Um, as opposed to, uh, type of warehouse use that you would expect from, let's say, a FedEx facility that again is located on 303 or some of the facilities are in what was previously the traffic report. The county also asked for an updated study since there was a significant amount of concern about the truck traffic that is currently using Greenbush Road and the direction of that traffic, whether it goes north through the residential area or whether it goes south out to, uh, 303 and opposite mountain view. Uh, what we did in October of 2019, uh, we started the preparation of an additional traffic study that subtly looked at the classification counts, where the trucks are coming from, where they're going to, where the buses, school buses are going to, where they're coming from, as well as with the passenger cars. That was culminated in a report submitted to the board dated February of 2020. It was also submitted to the, uh, Rockland County Planning Department and the Rockland County Highway Department. Uh, what we did in that particular case is we did two types of counts. We did what was called a machine count, and that's typically the type of count that you put the tubes across the roadway and you establish the volume of traffic that go past and over those tubes. Those tubes not only give you the volume of traffic, but gives you also the classification of the vehicles crossing that tube. So, I know whether, based upon that information, whether or not I have a passenger car, whether I have a truck, or whether I have a bus, and the data is broken down. In this particular case, we took two locations along Greenbush Road. One location would be north of the northern driveway, that means north of the site. And second, uh, location would be, uh, between the two driveways heading towards Route 303. Now, that basically indicated not only the hourly and, um, total daily volume either heading northbound or southbound, as well as the classification of each of the vehicles during each of those hours, whether they were passenger cars, whether they were trucks, or whether they were buses. And the reason buses were of concern was, was right now, there's, there are a number of school buses that are parked on the site, and they leave the site and come back to the site every day. That was the first applicant. Um, the results of that count indicated that there was a significant volume of truck traffic south of the drive, heading towards 303, with less volume, and we can get into the numbers, or less volume to the north. Basically, the percentages to the north were 2% or 3% trucks. Now, when I say 2% or 3% trucks, I'm talking about all trucks on the roadway, not necessarily just coming from the site. It could be coming from other sites, it could be school buses coming from 303 going to Niglet, but it just basically classifieds the volume of traffic as well as the classification of that traffic in various sections of Greenbush Road, not necessarily related to the site. Uh, south of it, we were in the vicinity of 10%, or some, in some cases, higher. So, going to 303, we have 10%, going north of the site, we would have in the vicinity of 2% or 3%. That's all, that's all documented in the study. We then went one, one step extra, we went in and we actually put, uh, cameras that are mounted, and we recorded for a 12-hour period or, of course, a two days, basically from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. We, we, we recorded the volume of traffic coming into and out of the site, uh, at the two driveways. And we recorded that on a, on a 15-minute basis that gave us a significant amount of information with respect to how the vehicles were turning, whether it was, whether they were turning right or left coming in, how they were leaving the site, whether or not they were making a right turn or a left turn, whether the vehicle was a truck, whether it was a bus, whether it was an automobile, et cetera. And, uh, based upon that count, and it's all recorded, there's nothing we do, we just record the video. I, as, as Born Wolf used to say, and I'm dating myself now, let's go to the video. The video basically showed us that the volume of traffic coming in and out. We had to be very careful on the south driveway, because the site driveway serves multiple sites. It serves not only our site, but also serves the site to the south. So, this basically comes in off Greenbush Road, and then splits. The south goes to one direction and the, uh, our site is fed by the other leg, so it's a Y shape. So, we had to make sure we took account of that location also. And that also was videotaped. The results of the, results of it is the fact is that right now, and I'll concentrate on the north driveway because I'm worried about, as people are, with respect to the trucks that may be going to the north. We found that there's a sign that says trucks are restricted to make a left turn coming out of the site. We found that they, that was basically, um, balanced during that particular time of day with that, with that was recorded. One day was much heavier than the other, we used that worst day. And it found out that maybe you had an occasional violation of that right turn, and that could have been because of a person not seeing it, or the truck driver not seeing it, or it could be like a UPS truck that was going to another location to the north. So, we were able to stratify that, and we're able to put it into a count that showed what the information is as it currently exists. We're again able to extrapolate that and come up with restrictions, as we talked about at the beginning, driveway restrictions, that would discourage the use of trucks making a right turn coming out of the site or conversely, making a left turn. We want to keep them on the state highway, Route 303, because that's where they're going today. That's where they want to go, and, um, this is all documented as part of the video. That information was, as I said, was submitted to the town, was submitted to the county. And just in summary, I'll read the summary that's in the report on page, um... Page four of that report. Um, first conclusion was based upon the machine count that we talked about. The volume of trucks and buses using Greenbush Road is significantly lower with north of the site compared to south of the site. We said that was based upon the two. The driveway restriction on the north driveway, trucks no right turn, does reduce traffic and bus traffic coming out of the site and making a right turn. Uh, with the redevelopment of the site, current school buses will be eliminated. There'd be no school buses, maybe off the site as it is. Trucks to and from the site currently used Greenbush Road to the south to reach the signalizer in Section 303, and the observed trip generation rates are lower than what we're using in the study, and I'll get back to that particular piece of information in a minute. So, basically, we, we were, we were able to create what is called, what the county requested, what the town requested, was a truck study that delineated what is the current operation on, along Greenbush Road, uh, based upon, uh, not only the site in question, but also the overall operation of Greenbush Road. Uh, just recently, based upon that review, the, basically, the county acknowledged the report that we submitted that I referred to, February 5th, 2020, and requested additional information to make sure we're using the right category of trips. We had used category, the technical number, category 150, sent to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that basically gives the hourly trip generation rate. We act, took the actual counts that we said we did based upon video, computed what the trip rate would be under the worst of the two days we surveyed, and compared that to the information we used in our study. We found out that, uh, just taking the site proportionally increases based upon square footage, that if we use just proportionately, we would be generating less traffic than we had predicted in the study. Our conclusion is then that the trip rate documents the fact is that we affect, um, they are in the correct category of 150. Um, I trade, I try to make this analysis of the various reports that we've done feeling simple, very clear, without getting into the, I'll say, into the weeds and numbers, but we would be glad to know that if you look at the truck study, it gives you both vocabulary information, it gives you graphical information, um, it gives the peak hour information as relates to that wide area that we're talking about and the, and the driveways to the site, and it's as granular as you can get based upon the information. And I'd be willing to answer any questions you have with respect to any of the... Thank you, thank you.
Let me look through the design report for us, and, uh, we'll move on from there. Um, only now is the, uh, Rocket County Park and Planning, March 11th letter. Uh, dated September 25th, 2019, we issued comments on two GML referrals from the Rockland County Planning Board for the projects. Title 125 South Greenbush Road Warehouse Extension O-1853R and 155 Greenbush Properties, uh, O-18535. Our first comment in each review recommends the clients of 303 overlay zone for the properties. We have considered the overlay zone to comply with the parcel due to the shared ownership with another adjacent parcel that fronts on 303. During our recent discussion, Jane Slaven, Arne, Director of Office for the Zoning and Planning Administration, uh, she indicated although the parcels are listed together and indeed are owned by the same entity, they are not binding, especially with regards to zoning. This was confirmed by the town attorney and the attorney from the board. This lady further stated that they have been treated as individual lots as they are separate tax parcels and are physically separated by South Greenbush Road. Given this information, the final decision pertaining to these two projects is that they are not part of the 303 overlay zone and therefore do not have to comply with the requirements of the overlay district. We recommend that you discard our first comments pertaining to the 303 overlay zone of the two GML reviews referred above. That was your comment, Daniel Schwartz, African National Team. Okay? Um, because I didn't know that was a big concern with respect to 303, uh, overlay.
Could you pull the mic closer to yourself, please?
Excuse me?
Could you please pull the mic closer?
Okay, I'm surprised, because I talk pretty loud, I'm surprised you can't hear me.
You can't hear me.
Okay, uh...
People in the back.
Okay, all this information is up on the table, so, or it could be made available to you. Uh, this is dated September 24th, revised, this letter superses, uh, 9/23. Uh, Jane Slaven?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that should be today's date, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Uh, submitted references, uh, study of passenger vehicle trucks as prepared by management, South DB dated February 5th, 2020. Number one, the applicant is proposing a 147,000 square foot expansion to existing 286,000 square foot warehouse on one site and a new 128,000 square foot warehouse on adjacent site to the north. Number two, at the September 25th, 2019 Planning Board meeting, the applicant agreed to provide a new traffic study. Number three, for the Rockland County Planning Board later letter dated September 25th, 2019. Recommendation number one, the RPCPTD recommends, recommends note that a study has been completed that uses ITE Land Use Code 150-Warehouse. However, Code 152-HQ Warehouse may be more appropriate for proposed use. Four, on February 5th, 2020, study submitted utilizing the ITE Land Use Code 150, the Rockland County Planning Board, Rockland County Highway, New York State Department of Transportation, all express concerns regarding to the appropriateness of the L time, LTE?
I think, I think.
I, I, thank you. ITE Land Use Code 150 to evaluate proposed traffic impacts. Five, as per my September 25th letter, the board should consider the need of an independent traffic consultant to review the traffic reports and to the appropriateness of the use of the ITE Land Use Code 150 in this application. Number six, basically the same letter that I wrote, uh, read pertaining to the overlay. Number seven, my comments, September 24th, 2019 letters for 125 and 155 South Greenbush Road still apply. Number eight, pro town code, no trucking is movement in any kind sharply permitted in any district between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM unless permitted, permission has been granted by the ZPA. Number nine, approval was granted in 2008 for the bus company parking, which was limited to three years with a maximum of 30 buses. The applicant's attorney has notified, was notified on February 28th, 2020 that they are on violation of their previous approval. The applicant must make applications to Planning Board for review and reapproval or discontinue bus parking. Number 10, the full EAF is under review. Okay, that was for 125 and 155. Um, I have a letter dated March 9th, and of course, P. Department of Urban Management and Area. Uh, on this, part of the public comments, the supplement traffic study dated 2/5/20 is under review. And that's for both 125 and 155. Okay. Do you want to get that now? I think I'm... Um, this is from Rockland County Planning, February 26th. Um, and that can be every comment, I'm gonna do a couple, but there are 19 comments. Um, okay, the first one is, is in respect to the ITE Land Use Code, uh, which was used by the applicant of 150, and the Rockland County Planning is requesting that they use the, uh, Code 152. Uh, number eight, the site plan shows an interconnection of the access to the parcel to the north, tax lot, number 74.07-1-15.2. Cross-access easement must be provided for the interconnection and access of the southern site with the parcel to the north.
Mr. Chairman, number nine.
Okay, number nine, a recent site, busy confirming that the northern portion... You might be...
Thank you.
That's not the rule.
You're really great.
The recent site busy confirming that the northern portion of the subject site, as well as the southern portion, tax lot 74.07-1-15.2, are actively being used for truck and trailer storage. Over 50 trucks will park and more trucks will arrive in to park. The bus storage that had occurred just over the parcel boundary have been relocated to the northwest parking area, occupying most of the parking lot, since it was designed for deep, liquid parking, close to 30 buses will park in this area. The applicant is not, is not illustrating any truck parking areas with the current application, instead only parking of regular-sized vehicles. The northwest parking area that is filled with buses is proposed to be partially replaced by a building with only eight vehicular parking spaces provided. It must be indicated where the truck trailers that are currently stored on the site will be located instead. Uh, in addition, arrangements must be made for the role of the school buses on the site prior to construction as the bus storage is to be eliminated. Number 10, site is deficient in parking at close to 67%. The town works out, was monitor the site to ensure that sufficient parking is provided for the new warehouse space. If it is determined that insufficient parking exists, then off-site location must be identified to store the trucks or other vehicles related to the site. Under those circumstances, can vehicles park within the county railway, highway railway? That's all I said, anybody else want to read anything else? Okay, um... Number one, access to post-use warehousing parking spaces, the truck trailers must be provided. Past history has confirmed that track, that trailer parking is a necessity for the site. Trailer parking in the space provided for only regular-sized vehicles will not occupy more parking spaces, thereby extending the deficiency, I don't want to use small words, deficiency parking requirements even more. Parking layout that provides both semi-trailer parking and vehicular parking that needs a site need must be provided. The deficiency in parking will be increased, requiring a greater parking variance than that is indicated by the site plan. Okay, um... So, that's, I think, that's the same letter, I think, uh, 155. Any difference?
I think nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Nine, 10, 11, 12.
No, excuse me. Nine, the recent study confirmed that the southern portion of the subject parcel is actively being used for trucks and trailer storage. Over 50 tractor trailers will park, more trucks will arrive in to park. Disposition of the parking area must be provided as it, as it is apparent that tax lot number 74.07-1-15.1 needs this storage area. Ten, the site is deficient parking at close to 64%. The town of Orange Town was monitoring the site to ensure that sufficient parking is provided for the new warehouse spaces. If it is determined that insufficient parking exists in an off-site location must be identified to store the trucks or other vehicles related to the site. Under those circumstances, can vehicles park within the county highway railway? Currently, the site plan shows an area designated for trailer parking that is not heavy or delineated and is adjacent to wetlands. We are concerned that trailer park there will encroach on the wetlands that is not specifically delineated due to the fact that other vehicle storage has had been located on the site. Okay, Town of Orange Town Bureau of Fire prevention, March 10th. Under eight items, Rockland County Highway Department, March 5th. The applicant should clarify the ITE Land Use Codes used in the study is, is appropriate or a different Land Use Code should be applied. New York State Department of Transportation dated March 10th. We remain concerned about the ITE Land Use Code 150 that was used to evaluate proposed traffic impact. We do not have enough information that the actual use of 125 Greenbush Road property is the end user, the consumer as per the performance center. If so, this substantially changes the traffic impact and the ground 303 signals are -86. Lever of service, LOS, please have applicant provide functional distribution. I have a letter to Ms. Cooper Smith from, Mr. Raloff. Thank you for saying in the traffic report that found all my cause of concerns. In addition to the above ground streams which will be affected by any construction, they'll be upsetting the abundant wildlife we have here. Two subjects that are probably mentioned in every complaint. There are also, there'll also be diverting water to the north where my neighbors and I have our wells. That water has good chance of being contaminated with all these trucks idling, contributing to air pollution, possibly losing oil from the leaks to seepage to the ground. On the subject of air pollution, I cannot attend, I want to say plenty more meeting because of coronavirus. Thank you all for coming. I have three different lung diseases courtesy of 9/11, sorry, I'm quite busy about. And my physician said that I have lung crowds. We're currently waiting for the final resolution from the Veterans Conversation Fund. I'm sure there are people in this area with simple problems and I wish they would all come forward. I also anticipate problems with stoplights in the intersection of 303 and Mountain View. At certain times of the, certain times of the day, traffic can be backed up far enough. Backed up so far in route to 303, I think, so remains before they're able to control. With all the truck traffic that's back up, can be all day experience instead of monitoring. And at this time, those trucks are idling, we need not much more carbon dioxide in the air. Finally, I keep going back to the 303 overlay from a while back, I don't know. Again, like I mentioned before, the overlay is not part of this project. Another letter from a very symptoms. Be advised, the traffic study submitted for the reference planning board meeting does not trust code 152 as a HQ warehouse. This is more appropriate as a reference to the order by the Rockland County Planning Letter of 9/25/2019. Currently, the submitted traffic study does not present the proposed project for rather existing condition. Please see attached RCD Planning Board Letter. The site, the current site has shared business, nice path to the south while constantly showing tra- trailers back and forth operating 24 hours a day. This has been noted by Jane Slaven, Director of OPZAE, in violation of the R-DE regulation had been in progress between the hours 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Despite complaints to police department, they continue to violate the regulation. Please see attached January 21st, 2004 response to Jane Slaven. The traffic study introduced section B background fails to mention the school buses are parked illegally. Temporary zoning variance is issued in 2008 when conditioned by an empty building and was to be for three years only and limited to 30 buses. Temporary variance has expired, the conditions have changed. I witnessed more than 30 buses reported the violation of the OPZAE. In addition, buses and trailers in excess of five years are not permitted per Article XIIII, 303 overlay 13.10-6. Please see attached corresponds to 1320, corresponds to Jane Slaven.
That's it for that, did you acknowledge Mike Bettman's letter?
Yes, nine, I think, nine items.
Okay, and then there's also a neighbor letter from Robert Zirelli.
Okay, thank you. This is from Robert Zirelli. Hello, I'm a taxpaying resident, blah blah, I live at 601 North Greenbush Road between Bradley Parkway and Route 59. I am vehemently opposed to this massive warehouse proposal on South Greenbush Road and I want to make sure my opinion does not fall upon deaf ears. I love my community for the past 23 years, I moved here in 1997. The area has been inundated with large tractor trailers that have been causing more noise pollution as well as reducing the air quality and it's also very dangerous because of these large vehicles that have limited visibility both for the drivers as well for people in their vehicles following behind them in the past. In addition to the already abundant amount of transient trucking, it's not, it's not acceptable. My home is constantly getting blasted from the engine brake, it was 18 millimeters that I have to slow down or speed up for the stop because of the traffic right on 303 across from the FedEx by my home which is only 200 yards from Route 303 and is waking me and my wife up from our sleep in all hours of the day and to have an increase of more of this tractor trailers is just unacceptable. We do not want denial of our beautiful home to decrease after putting in so much into our home after all these 23 years. I would have attended this meeting this evening, but I have business in over Manhattan and I work the late shift. Like I said, and you know the paragraph, I'm waking all hours of the night, these loud engine noise, loud engine braking and it's disturbing, stressful and it makes me want to leave this wonderful neighborhood town that I love. All right, so then.
That's it, that's it.
I think that's it. Okay, that's it, Cheryl?
That's it.
Thank you. Question, no?
Okay, yes, I just think we'd like to just give you a little more information before the board speaks to us.
Sure.
Okay, would you like to answer the question?
I can't hear you.
Would you like to answer?
Okay, would you like to answer the question in reference to the trucks? The, as I indicated previously, the ITE is the Institute of Transportation Engineers and both the generation rates. And under the warehouse category, there are a number of categories it could fall under. This particular category, assuming the type of operation is going to be maintained, is completely different than what they call the HQ. The HQ area that the county is referring to is an operation that would either be the FedEx type of operation where you have workers come in and then you have the vans loading, leaving the site and coming back to the site. Or an Amazon type of operation where you have fossils being delivered to the last mile. These are two different, two distinct type of operations compared to the type of operation that's in this facility. And we have documented in response to the highway department's letter of March 5th, our own response letter based upon the actual county did and extrapolated to the site dated March 9th and that's part of the record. I haven't had a chance to talk to the county about it, seeing that this is not many days yet from March 9th or after their March 5th letter, but I'm sure we've addressed the questions. And a lot of the reason for that is that we are not dealing with a delivery system where you take tractor trailers, break down the fossils and have package deliveries to various customers. We have large trip, trip coming in and then large trucks going out and that's why you see the tractor trailers parked there where you would not see them in a HQ background operation.
I'd like to answer the question on the drainage, that's good. The drainage that was alluded to by the neighbor, I just wanted to point out the whole of our drainage coming out of the site drains to what I think we'll point to, to Culver underneath the Greenbush Road. And all of our, the different colors represent different treatment areas. I actually have a representative from ABS, Connor Leary. I'm going to have you just go over real quick what we're doing for pretreatment to assuage anyone's concerns on the groundwork issue.
So again, Connor Leary with ABS.
Paul, just, just a second. Mr. Friday, if you can, if you can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, so basically to keep it on the basic, I have what we call our environment structure.
What do you want to do or what you're doing?
This is what we are currently doing inside of our catch basin.
Questions to the chairman, please, it'd be a hard question.
And, excuse me.
All questions should go to the board?
Not now, there aren't any questions, I have to wait until they open it up to the public.
Okay, go ahead.
So our environment structures are made up of our high density polyethylene, quite similar to our N2O. This is simply bolted inside covering one of the outlets while our heavy debris sinks to the bottom. The oils and lighter materials will flow to the top allowing for the cleaner water to come up underneath and out through the outlet. This demo right here has a hole in here where this is just essentially an inspection port where this can be capped off if you needed to see inside of it, it's easy to access. The storm chamber. So our storm deck chambers are the water retention detention systems. I mean, basically for maintenance on that, we have what we call an isolator row. It's a dual fabric above and below the chambers. The water itself will go into the main catch basin. The water is then pushed through the one main isolator row and this were to fill up, it would then, the cleaner water would go beneath and into the other chambers. Yes, thank you. For maintenance, it's every, they say once it gets three hedges of sediments, depending on the product, it can be three to five years. Very easy to maintain, one row, we have an inspection port, eight by four in lines at the bottom where you can look inside to see the debris, it's very easy to maintain using a jet pack or vacuum.
And as far as the detention basins in front of the building, we actually have four ways and all entry points to where the drainage comes in that's cleaned up periodically as well. So I hope that helps address some of the water quality issues.
There are two other things I would like to cover before, some of the people. Number one, we specifically said that the buses will be removed when this project is built. The buses were there temporarily, it was said it was temporary, it was done as a service to the South Orange Town School District. They had no places to park their buses. Service was given to them, they were all told when the building gets expanded, the buses will have to move. If the board wants to go ahead and estimate extension wise, this project is being reviewed, we will do that. But remember, there is no guaranteed lease from this bus company and again, this is a service to the community, that's why the buses were allowed to have. The second thing is that there will be no trucks parked once the buildings are expanded. Before, any trucks that are parked on that area are going, are going to go. There will be no colonized truck parking in the term or any one floor.
Because I have a couple more things, but.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, can everyone hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I guess I have to kind of scream. Okay, a lot of questions about this and I would also refer to right to ask other questions and get clarifications coming from hearing from the concerned citizens in the area. Okay, now, right now, I want to draw a distinction obviously between trucks and trailers. See, the truck which is supposedly could consider the actual cab and the trailer and then you have the trailers themselves and they are a little bit different. Now, I would like to ask our esteemed town attorney, what's the limit number of trailers that they're allowed to store on a site like this?
I defer to building department, I don't, I don't have.
I'd have to look back to their previous approval at this point.
I'm sorry?
I don't know that number offhand, I'd have to look back.
I believe it was five, that's what it.
Could I, I would want to look at the previous.
Fine, you look at it and you'll find out, but we're still over by a factor of 10 and it hasn't been for, you know, just the last week, it's been there for months. One of the problems we run into with developments like this is the applicant's past history. And being that this has been going on for some time, I personally find it a little disturbing. Now, let's go back to some of the other questions on this. Mr. Collins, you're assuming this pattern which you have is minimum and maximum. How did you determine the number of additional tractor trailers that are going to be used by this site based upon future building which you haven't constructed? How did you extrapolate that fact or that projection?
In the original study dated July 24th, which was based upon Land Use Code 150, within the code, there was an indication, in the trip rate code, there was an indication not only as the total volume of traffic generated during peak hours over the course of the day, but also the type of distribution that, or classification of vehicles that are entering a site exist. We had used in that report, some 20% of the total volume of traffic projected would be truck traffic. When we did the confirmation, we found it to be slightly higher in order of 25%, but the same general category, you know, where that, every vehicle coming in is going to be a truck and every vehicle leaving will be a truck. And so it was based upon category 150, that's one of the reasons that the county asked us to clarify that because that's a completely different, a different mix if I go to a FedEx or a Amazon type of operation where they get a large number of passenger cars for the drivers of the vans coming in and then the vans going out as opposed to the tractor trailer. That's why the category was critical. That was basically confirmed when we did the truck study that was submitted in February. So when we initially did the study, it was based upon the Land Use Code 150. When we did the truck study, the truck study told us that the existing site with the trucks, etc. was also generating similar to Land Use 150. Therefore, Land Use 150 that keeps on getting referred to was appropriate and taking that percentage, we extrapolated that for the future building. So basically, the first study was based upon the work at by ITE. The second study documented what was exactly there today, which confirmed the Land Use Code 150 and then that was extrapolated, that's how we got the.
So in other words, what you're saying to me, just to clarify, I want to make sure I'm being accurate. And by the way, these use are my views as an original member of this board. I'm not speaking to the entire board of this. You use the term is generated. Now, we know that businesses have, have been evolving and we hope this business comes to be very successful. I'm just wondering if those numbers are a concern. Now, this was a campus type. Now, if this was a campus type setting where you had, you surrounded by a number of industrial properties, the character of my questions would be slightly different. But since you're in a very interesting area, you have a mountain to your east, a lot of the air, et cetera, can, has a habit of being trapped in there. There isn't clear circulation like you try not to talk to the hilltop. And I'm very concerned about what's happening in that respect to the neighbors. Now, basically, I noticed that Mr. Peters has asked for more time to study the traffic report. And I think that should be certainly given to him if nothing else is courtesy, because I want to hear more about this. Now, you've been hearing one of his reports, I think, at exits, almost as long as.
I'm not that old, you know.
I mean, I remember it was obviously uncertain, of course, the drainage, but that's.
He's old.
He's old, yeah. But anyway, you're all professionals, you know what you're doing. I'm trying to give this to you in a, and relatively simple. But there are some concerns in terms of us in the town as being the end users of your reports. I want to see a little bit more clarification on this in terms of the projection. Now, if you can't do that, okay, but I then intend to assume on a personal basis, it's probably going to be more tractor trailers than you have.
I agree, we're going to have more, but what happens proportionally more. So for example, if I had five today and I was doubling the size of the site, the projections indicated that we would have to. So there is, there are more, and I never said there would not be.
No, I understand that, sir. But the question is whether it's twice as many.
Well, I think based upon what, you know, I think you've been again, I've been in front of this board many times, many years. And normally, I call, call it as I see it.
I understand.
And I think for the most part, I've been fairly well on to what to expect.
All right. Now, I'm just clarifying things, but we also have people in attendance who may not be familiar with this process. Now, I have a question for the drainage engineer. You're mentioning about the oil, et cetera. For something of this size with this many vehicles, am I correct in saying you're putting in oil separators everywhere?
Every single catch base, sir.
All right, well, that's good. One question I have about the overall water situation is a lot of the water will be percolating into the ground. Is that true?
That's true.
So if anybody is nearby and they don't have a deep well, they might have some reasons to have concerns?
They would have some reasons to be concerned, of course. But I wouldn't say it's necessarily going to affect them.
No, I understand, but you can't say it's necessarily not going to.
I would say that.
Okay, I understand.
And we provide, we have provided everything in accordance with the New York State DPC rules, regulations for developments of this size and margins.
No, we understand that, and the DPC rules are like all rules. They're set up to make, so if it reaches a condition where it's so bad that has to be illegal, that they do something about it. However, there are many areas below that threshold that you wouldn't be comfortable with. For example, in noise abatement standards, you might have a certain decibel number that's so bad it's illegal, but you wouldn't want to have that annoying overload going on all the time. Again, this has to do with the fact that you are next to a residential area. Now, another question I have, and I know the site over a long period of time. In all the earlier maps, on the extreme easterly proportion of the property, there's an area that's referred to as an Indian burial ground. And I haven't seen that appearing in the maps anymore. Has that been, was that an erroneous designation or what?
Jay Greenwell, who's the surveyor, and I answered that question. There are no burial grounds on this property. There are no burial grounds, and Jay Greenwell showed the town. Jay Greenwell and his survey showed there are no Indian burial grounds on this property.
So he did excavations, architectural, like.
He had a complete study that was done years ago to prove this. He has the data to show there are no Indian burial grounds on this property.
Okay, well, and it was as interesting, it was on the maps for so many years. All right, these things happen. Next thing. I'm worried about the amount of time that the trucks are idling. I'm worried about the trucks being backed up as they're coming in and going out. My overall impression of this, and I want to hear what the neighbors have to say and my learning colleagues, is that this seems to be, because of the nature of this, it seems to be a bit of overdevelopment, in my opinion, now being conservative on that estimate. And I'm wondering how fair this is to have this. I know it's to your benefit and maybe other people's benefit, but should the residents have to bear the burden of the development of this? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I have a few questions about the traffic trucks. With the expansion of buildings, where it's open, how many swifts do you?
Can you hear 147, how many?
No, no.
Can you use your microphone?
How many trucks do you have going in and out of here now without the expansion? Do you have that? On a daily basis? Just your trucks going in and out of here? Another traffic report includes all trucks and traffic. I'm just interested in what truck traffic is coming in and out of your facilities?
Coming into the north driveway, on table 1B and some, in the table. And again, I told you about the southern driveway, there's a difference coming up green bushes, both in the Y. If I look at table 1B, which is a summary on one of the days counted, which is October 23rd, 2019, between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. The way we split it is we split it, we expected turning left, turning right, coming in, and likewise going out. I didn't do the total, but if I just did the quick calculation, the left turn entry over the course of that 12-hour period, there's two trucks coming in. Draw right over there, right over the video. Making a right turn in, if I do hand them up, it's 10, 18, 22, 30, 51, 50, 65, 75, 80 trucks.
Per day?
Oh, and that's what, that's what, per day. What about here?
One entry. How many trucks?
Making a right turn in.
How many white trucks do you expect to have with the expansions?
I would expect that that traffic would, these are the site doubles, I would expect it to double.
So 160 trucks. These are considered tractor trailers?
Could be in combination of single unit trucks, could be tractor trailers.
It's a single unit truck?
Single unit truck would be like a UPS van, a box truck. Not necessarily tractor trailer.
And the buildings that you're going to construct and the buildings that are there already are going to be like a drop-off for Amazon or Fedex?
No, 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 no. I want the owner to talk about what the operation is inside the building.
Well, you kept referring to Amazon.
I was only talking about Amazon and Fedex because it relates to the different categories that you could have in a warehouse operation. And for example, a FedEx type of operation would generate a significantly different traffic pattern and traffic volumes when compared to this type of operation. And that was my only talk about, when I talked about that. That's, it's solely a difference of the type of operation. You would have more traffic, but different types of traffic, different hours that it takes. That's the only reason I'm talking about that. And that was to clarify the question that came up from the county and the state with respect to category 120, or 150, or 152. And that was one of the requirements on that.
So who can answer what type of operation? What type of operation is in there now?
So basically, there's four different tenants over there, and all they're doing is bulk storage. For example, one of the tenants has just cardboard boxes. So he just stores cardboard boxes there and he shuts them out. Another one is an elevator company, so they have elevator parts. And it's not something that's high-volume, that's constantly going in and out, in and out, in and out all the time. As a matter of fact, I did bring one of the neighbors that complained about this project to show them what kind of operation we have, just to show them that this is the kind of storage that we have here on-site, and it's not an Amazon warehouse, as some people may think.
So it's basically.
Dry storage.
And for other industries, not basically for public.
Correct.
Storage for parts and stuff like that.
Parts. Nice side has like big rolls of cloth that get converted into wipes.
And that's going to, that's going to stay the same?
Correct. We're not looking for.
With the expansion and everything, so it's going to be.
Correct. We're not looking for any manufacturing, we're not looking for FedEx, we're not looking for Amazon. They don't want us, they, it's too small, quite frankly, for them. They want something bigger. We just want dry storage, so much of the tenants that are there right now.
I have a couple things that, if one of the rest of the board knows it. First of all, the full VA episode, we will sell, that's going to be one of the big issues. Another issue is in respect to the ITE land use codes. I understand what you're saying in respect to you use 150 and some of the other organizations want 152. I think you have to work that out between, because the Rockland County Planning, Rockland County Highway, and New York State DOT, they're expressing concerns that they may, you may want to use the 152. I think you have to work that out with them to satisfy their concerns and also, I know Ms. Lane also has the same concerns in respect to using the correct code.
We have to work that out with the county because we need a driveway permit from the county. And we will work that out with the county, and the minute that was worked out with the county, we will address the issue with the state. And the county highway, county planning, I look at it as one, it's county, and we have to address it with the state. And the state, we've used in other cases, high-queue to 52, 152, and we've had questions with respect to that because the ones is the difference in buying, and the other one is a classification factor. But we will put that out. I have to, I have to work it out because I need a permit.
Correct, correct. Also, Ms. Lane is also concerned, and I think the rest of the board members are too, is that we get an independent traffic study done, and I think.
I can't do that.
No, 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 we will. We will, we're going to hire, we're going to hire an office consultant. We want to.
I only say that to break that.
Once we find out which code, that everybody's going to be happy with, then I think we should probably hire, and just have it track study. And.
I think you can hire that person now.
Yes, I understand, but I don't know if we really know which code.
It doesn't.
Right, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry. My recommendation was to retain the services of an independent. Excuse me.
Folks, please, we're trying to get this, everybody is going to be able to talk, but please, can we get our work done so you people know what we're trying to do for you? Okay? Thank you.
My recommendation was actually for the board to consider hiring an independent consultant to review the reports and whether it necessitates that other study to be done. They can come back and make the recommendation to the board as to how to move forward, since so many agencies are asking for it, the applicants saying they don't feel it's necessary. Have an independent consultant make a recommendation.
We'll have that, okay?
We know it's going to get it done, let's review all the problems that we're working on.
Right, right, okay. That's all I, Mr. Young.
I share the same concerns Mr. Dell has on this traffic study, especially with the expansion. Concerned that the estimates or projections are a little conservative. And also, our chairman as well, although I'm not an engineer, but I'm not a traffic engineer, and I don't quite know the difference between 150 and 152, but I would like to see what another consultant says about this study. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we don't have to get the 150 versus 152 straightened out. And I know you said you're not going to park any trucks there overnight? What about, what about just trailers?
No trailers either. If you take a look at the drawing, you'll see there are bays that.
Can you use the microphone? Thank you.
If you take a look at the drawing, you'll see the bays that are there. The only thing that is going to be there, there will be trailers at the bays. There will be no outside parking at all. If there are going to be trailers there, they will be at the bays, and which we have laid out.
I'm sorry, so every truck that goes in will come out that day?
Will they stay at the bay?
Always at the bay.
That's correct.
Don't you set apart before?
Just one comment I would like to make. The trucks that are there right now that are storied that, which is probably the bulk of the trucks that are coming back and forth on the Green Bush Road, that's because they need more space as tenants. They're storing stuff over there. So if we build this expansion, those trucks are, will no longer be needed to be there for storage. It's gone. And only things that are staying there is by loading docks, those trucks will stay there, but there's no parking. If they don't have a parking lot, they'll go somewhere else.
So that temporary storage will no longer exist?
Will no longer exist due to them having space to store all their extra stuff because they have an expanded warehouse.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Accord.
Yeah, just everybody hit on the balance of the traffic study, you know, 150, even that is concerned, number, which particularly fine, versus the 152. So we'll wait on the traffic study and the independent study comes out there. Also, what, just, do you have a copy manager?
Project manager, owner's route, yeah.
Who owns the property?
Alexander Properties.
Anybody else?
No.
Is this what tenants are now?
Correct.
Are they going to be the same tenants who will be in the new building?
Well, for now, the same tenants will stay in the existing area, then we will have to do weekly lease negotiations with them if they want to expand, and, you know, we don't know if this is going to be happening yet, so we won't go into those negotiations. It's a little premeditated.
All right. Did anybody meet the neighbors?
Yeah.
Did you, did they voice their concerns about the issue with the proposed northern access driveway?
Correct, yeah, they did, and we actually adjusted, did, made some adjustments on the plan.
Is there a new plan for that?
They did make adjustments, I'm not sure what plan you have.
Is that on that night?
Yes.
What did you do to the northern driveway?
We restricted the, restricted the, the northern driveway, restricted it to only access in by cars. Okay, it's cars only.
They still drive with it?
Only access in for cars, yes. And then there's an emergency access for emergency vehicles to get out, but there's no room for trucks either way. So it's only cars in.
So you made that concern with the northern driveway, by keeping the northern driveway?
No, we made their concerns by restricting, their concern about trucks coming in and out of the driveway. There's no trucks coming in and out of the driveway. They come to the southern.
Yeah, because cars only, that won't have an effect on there?
They're only coming into the site, not leaving the site on that driveway. We, the traffic engineer, to discuss.
I'd like to see what the neighbors think about that. You said emergency access?
Yes, prior.
I read prior prescriptions, no, they didn't mention one note about needing that access.
They did in prior comments.
I didn't see that.
That's why it's on there, because of their comments.
PR, yeah.
I don't know, wasn't on the latest one?
Mr. McCurry, during PR state meetings, that was brought up and was addressed.
And he wanted it?
Yes.
All right, I didn't see that in the notes. That's it, I have, there's a lot of concerns with this, so I don't think we have to get too far into it, because I think it's going to be brought back. But a lot of concerns with the new building affecting the properties to the north. You know, you got a hundred buffer to the north, but you really don't have a buffer to the residents on the west. You know, like, with that driveway being there.
You know, like, with that driveway being there, it's not gonna be a buffer. You know, it's gonna be cut open, there's not gonna be the trees there anymore. If you can move everything down to equal the commercial properties to the west, I think that'd have a better effect on the neighbors. And, I mean, I know Mr. Brenner's usually saying this, but one of our main jobs is to look after the neighbors. You know, if it's in the town code, that we make sure that you guys can build where you wanna build, but make sure it doesn't affect the neighbors in a negative manner. Uh, and just, I want to address, you said Gabe Alexander was the owner?
Yeah.
Alright. The entity disclosure form that was filed for the project also lists somebody else, you know that?
I mean, this is from what I know.
Alright.
I work for Gabe Alexander, so that's, that's what I know.
The entity disclosure form was filed with the project, also lists Old Tower LLC, remember that?
No.
Remember that, nobody else there?
I don't know.
Alright, no, just they're listed as an entity...
So who, who said we have to disclose who, who the owners are? I've only got Mr. Alexander, so I don't know.
It's just, just funny, it popped up, another LLC is the owner.
Perhaps he's a member of the LLC, we don't know. We'll have to get back to him.
Alright.
Could be a divesting partner.
Yeah, this is twelve ninety Metropolitan Avenue in Brooklyn, is that right? Alright, just checking. Uh, that's all I have for now, good, thank you. Okay. Yeah, no. I'm gonna open it up to the public, I want everybody to be able to come up and, and speak their piece. Everybody will be allowed no more than three minutes. Uh, we have a lot of people here, and I think everybody, as you, as you know, everybody's concerned about it. Um, if, if the person in front of you comes up and, and says exactly what you feel is what you wanna say, just say my name, so-and-so, and I feel the same way the other person does. This way, you're gonna vote me out here, so... Is that a personal line up?
Mr. Chairman, we have a sign and sheet, we have a sign and sheet.
Oh, you have a, we have a sign and sheet?
It's over there.
Did Catherine jump the line by chance?
No.
Where is the sign and sheet?
Okay, you wanna sign it? Uh, the first is Vanessa Lappens.
Nobody wants to speak? Please call your microphone.
Vanessa? Yes. Can I have, can I have counsel for CP, or can we put a gun in the order of signing this? Uh, stand behind the mic, please. I think I turned it on, let's see.
Hello?
My name is Vanessa Lappens, I live at six fifty-nine Western Highway, Glovel, New York. To date, in three days, we have over one thousand sixty-eight signatures on change.org against this project. I have a copy of the petition and those signatures for you today. This is a snippet of all those who would, given the choice, go in the negative for this needless construction. The needs of the many outweigh, should outweigh the wants of a few. The impact of this change is an enormous negative effect on three oh-three corridor, open space, wildlife, the watershed, all the residents who have already voiced their concerns in the past. The piecemeal approach is inappropriate. If this many people said no, in a subset of residents who are active in a few groups on Facebook, and in such short order, then it's clear that a change of this magnitude should be voted on by referendum after all materials are made available for the year. I have a copy of the petition, I have a copy of the signatures to submit to you today. I also have a copy of all the comments left by the residents when they signed. I can either read them to you now, or I can hand them in as records.
I think you can, please go.
These are the comments, that's the petition, those are the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Barry, Seitler?
I'll defer to the other.
Barry's gonna defer, okay?
It'd be you.
It'd be you.
Is everybody okay with the attorney going next?
Yes.
Democracy, I didn't wanna push anybody ahead of anybody.
Good evening, the chairman, members of the board, my name is Stephen Hohman, and I represent the, uh, the neighbors that are immediately to the north and to the west.
Can you raise the microphone, you're the most... Thank you.
Stephen Hohman, I would turn it over to the neighbors to the north and to the west. Um, the reason why I wanted to speak first was because we were on the topic of the access driveway. I went through the plans, um, I was looking for the, uh, the proper inclusion of the plans of the requirements according to the site plan. Uh, the town code basically outlines it, it's section twenty-one A, and one of those provisions is that structures with respect to the neighboring properties must be shown on the site plan. Now, it's possible that they're on the, the desk before, uh, this board, but I don't have access to them. The plans that are displayed here do not have the access driveways to my client's properties. Now, it is actually possible for this board to appreciate whether the location of the northern entrance to the one fifty-five lot that's gonna interfere with my client's properties, unless you have, physically can see where that is relative to the proposed entry to one fifty-five. Now, the site house property, my understanding, is right across the back of, and cars coming in and out are gonna have their, their headlights flashing right across their property into their property development. The same way with the laws is just north of the site house property. So what I'm asking, and what I've, what I did is I actually submitted a letter to the board so that I wouldn't have to basically take more than two minutes for it. Uh, a letter dated September twenty-third, twenty nineteen, to the chairman and to the board members, basically outlining some of the highlights of what I'd like the board to, to look at. But I would ask this board to direct the applicant to make a proper site plan so that the board can evaluate the location of these entrances and how they're gonna adversely affect my clients. I won't go through the other points in my, in my, uh...
It is shown on this plan.
And it is listed on my comments from September twenty-fourth. The applicant has not, to date, submitted revised plans that address the previous applications, just so the board is aware of that.
But on this sheet here, it does show the driveway location, and the property is on. It's very, it's very light, but it's, it's on here.
Right, and there's also two sets of drawings.
Okay, so whatever set?
Yes, and I think your code basically states that within a certain perimeter around the property, perhaps it should be shown of the actual structure, which would be my corner cones, and other structures on the property, which aren't there, essentially could drive those structures. So without that, we really can't tell. And also, with respect to inertia switch, which is just to the south of my client's property, that has a, a commercial driveway there. My position is that we're at an early stage at this point. There's a lot of flexibility in the plan that the applicant can, can insert at this point. My position is that it would be a much more acceptable plan if that, uh, driveway entry would be limited to one and would be across from, certainly no further north than the inertia switch entry. So again, this board can evaluate that, because that information is not on the plans. That has to be entered in plans, and has to be evaluated by the community, as well as this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barry, you wanna go now?
Oh, we, I went for the...
Constantine Bellis?
Yes. Hi, my name is, uh, Constantine Bellis, I live on, uh, two forty South Green Bush Road. Um, very concerned about the, the, uh, traffic, the additional traffic of, of trucks. We already have a safety issue, South Green Bush Road is very narrow. Um, I don't know if you've been on the road, but it, it's got a narrow S-turn, um, the street up and down is pretty narrow. We have quite a few eighteen-wheelers coming down from the north. Some even come over Closet Mountain, try to make a very sharp, uh, left turn to go south on Green Bush Road. And, uh, you know, my general concern is about the, the saf, the safety and the additional traffic that, uh, this project could produce, um, that I would, uh, you know, if I could, I don't, the town doesn't have jurisdiction rights, it's a county road, so maybe my complaint should go to the county and express that, maybe they should eliminate trucks over a certain weight. Um, because it, it's a problem for our, our children that, uh, you know, live on the street, our elderly neighbors. Um, and I'm very much concerned that, you know, an accident might happen in the future, God forbid. You know, that includes, you know, these truck, these addition, this additional traffic that, uh, uh, we foresee being generated. Thank you.
Eric Bosley?
Going through the discussions with the applicant, one of the things that we were concerned about is traffic on Green Bush Road. That's why we have made the applicant, uh, divert all traffic, truck traffic coming off of his property to the left going south on Green Bush Road. Again, it's a county road, the town cannot do anything other than tell the applicant that you have to, um, form your curving so that the trucks could have to go over the curb to go north. Um, possibly put a sign there that said trucks left turn only. These are the only things that the town can do. Uh, we're doing everything we can to force the applicant to have all his trucks go south, so they go right out to the traffic line. Um, the way as it sits now, what the plan shows now, no traffic, truck traffic coming off of this property should go north. Now, if the truck turns at the light, a garbage truck turns off the light, and goes, goes all the way up Green Bush Road, the applicant has no, no, you know, jurisdiction over that. So I want you to be aware of that. Um, I know some of the GPSs, they're so outdated that they do force trucks onto smaller roads. Um, I think part of our concern is, and I don't know if we can do anything about it, is we're gonna try to get a hold of the county to see if we can put low restrictions on the roads, up by you, up further by you, you know, wherever, not even right next to the property, but further up.
You're there.
And, and, you know, do whatever we can in respect to that. But like I said, we'll, we'll force the applicant to have all his truck traffic go south on Green Bush Road, because we know that that turn is a problem.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, next.
I just have a question.
Wait, hold this.
List, no, okay. Eric Bosley?
Hey, Eric Bosley, I have two comments out in the group. Uh, just to clarify, um, one-fifty-two, a high-queue warehouse, defined by the ITE, is a warehouse of two hundred thousand gross square feet of floor area or more, with a ceiling height of twenty-four feet or more. Um, it also talks about having automated lifts, which the owner described this building to be fully automated. Um, I think it clearly, clearly falls in the one-fifty-two category, it's what it was made for. Um, and then I just also wanted to talk about the lack of a fire road on the west side of the entire property. I know, uh, they might be thinking South Green Bush Road's satisfied, but with the detention basins and the screen in front, which is tree, you're at least a hundred and twenty feet from the building at some points going around Green Bush Road for a fire truck. So if they did have a fire lane crossing the fire west side of the property, it would also allow them to keep all their trucks for internal operations in the property, instead of using Green Bush Road operationally, which is what they do right now. Jake brought me to the property and showed me like the current conditions, and they do use all those trailers there for temporary storage to supply ice pack. So they go and grab those trailers and run them around to the south entrance, and then run the empty ones back to the north entrance, twenty-four seven, with a little dolly. And every time the dolly picks up one of those trailers, it's like boom, that even here for miles. So their needs of yo-yoing those trucks is not gonna go away if you put the storage aside, it's just gonna happen faster. Um, they also admit that they don't know who the tenants are gonna be to fill all the rest of the space. If they don't know who the tenants are gonna be, then there's five different categories of one, and, and use code one-fifty-two. And one of them is a parcel center, if we don't know who the tenants are gonna be, we have to assume it could be a parcel center, unless there's some restrictions put in place. And that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, we got a list here.
I'm still ready.
Aaron Connolly?
Hi, my name is Aaron Connolly, I live at two twenty-eight South Green Bush Road. Um, I just wanna thank, first of all, several of the board members here that spoke tonight. I thought your comments were sensitive and thoughtful to us town people that are here with our concerns, so I can't thank you enough for that. Um, I'm not gonna stand here with statistics like some of these smarter people behind me, but I'm gonna stand here as a, um, a mom that lives on that road with young children, that it's already unsafe, like Mr. Bellis said, with the turns and the, um, the cut-through that it is to Nyack, the volume of traffic is already extreme. Um, and like this gentleman said, I'm gonna vote like I see it. I live there, so if you want, I entertained you guys last year, I invited you to come to my house, I bored you for however long you wanna stay to get a full traffic study, because I know that you implement cameras for two days here and there in July, and, you know, people are traveling. The daily traffic that you would see on a basis that I've lived there for several years is already out of control. So my thoughts on this project, it is irresponsible, it's dangerous, it's disrespectful to these town people and taxpayers that are proud to be South Orange Town residents. I think it's negligent, I think the fact that it's common sense, that the health and safety of your town taxpayers should come first, but I know that today's day, that's a thing of the past. Um, I have a neighbor that applied to get a pool, a pool in his backyard, and got denied. A pool, and we're talking about a massive warehouse. His pool would be in his backyard, we'd keep it, you know, I wouldn't do anything extreme, but that was denied. I think this overdevelopment is absurd. I, I can't understand how that is even entertained. Um, I wish and hope and pray that the common sense and the fairness to all of us here tonight, um, gets acknowledged and recognized. Thank you.
Did you speak to the fire road on the west, western side?
What? Who's there with the legislature?
Fran Altenberger. Fran?
Hello, gentlemen, ladies. Uh, my name is Fran Altenberger, and I live at three fourteen Green Bush Road in Glovel. Um, full disclosure, I am on the environmental committee with the town of Orange Town. I'm here as a private citizen with a background of knowing some extra things. I wanna thank the, some of the board members who did speak tonight about their concerns, because this is totally overdeveloping. Um, it is just not what we wanna see in our town. The comprehensive plan is going to be studied again, which is gonna be great, but most citizens, when you talk to them walking up and down the street, as I've done for many years, um, have asked that the overdevelopment stop. I'm just giving you kind of a little history of some of the people that I talked to. Sorry. Um, I would like to know what's going on with the monitoring wells under there, and where they're gonna be located, and what's happening with those. Um, you know, I am worried that I have a well, so I am worried about what's going on. I would like to keep those monitoring wells there, somewhere, because I know there's plumes. And with, if you're minus the wells, the monitoring wells, you don't know where the plume's going. So I wanna make sure that that happens. Um, how many docks, bays are there now? And how many are proposed controls?
I counted fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six? Okay.
If everyone sees, we're gonna be here till two AM, keep interrupting. At the end, the chairman will address the questions, we're taking down some notes, and they'll be answered, okay?
Okay.
You keep going, thank you.
So if they're challenging, I'm just gonna give you a little brief history. I worked in Serox. I used to load and unload tractor trailers for a living. We could do one sixty-foot tractor trailer in thirty minutes, in and out. So you tell me how many trucks are gonna propose there, or could be there. Just giving you an indication of what can happen, okay? It was right on three oh-three in Bradley Parkway, which... It was right on 303 in Bradley Parkway, which is where commercial development like this belongs. Let's see. How many employees are expected? How many parking for cars are incinerated? Because now we're talking about all those cars going up and down 303, Green Bush Road also. And when that lets out, how many people are going to be not able to get out of their driveways for 30 minutes at a clip? All right? So I just would like to know that. There should be total information about both of those buildings, not just one. And then all the macadam that's going to be there? Is something else can be used possibly? I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was over. Thank you. But I would like to know if something else can be used for the macadam areas, okay? Thank you.
Joe Dudley.
Hello, good evening. My name is Joseph Dudley. I live at 250 South Green Bush Road. That's Northland's project. A couple of, a lot of stuff was covered, so I'll try not to repeat myself. The traffic, as my neighbors have already said, going in that direction, it's pretty bad. And the trucks are already evident on the roads. So one thing I have to say is that we don't, you may not have control of this county road, but we do have control of this property. So we may not be able to fix that one, but we can keep this project from, you know, getting a variance to allow more people, more traffic and more people in the area. So we do have some control. You guys have some control. One other comment that no one's mentioned, the traffic study. I noticed a few times, I drive up the road just about every day, the rubber stoppers that they use to count the cars and trucks, they were broken. I would say just about every day. I did at points see people coming to repair them, but I think that that would skew those numbers quite a bit. If we, I know you want to get an independent view of that, so I think we may have to get a total recount instead of just looking at what they give us. Video of two days, I think, is sufficient. But thank you for your time.
Liz Dudley.
Okay, Liz Dudley, 250 South Green Bush Road. We live right on the intersection of Spruce and South Green Bush, right by Claussen Mountain. We are, I've been working for two years with OPT and Rockland County Roadways, and Jane has gotten my emails too. There's no way to control the trucks. And where does the buck stop? I'm, I just, you can't even get a sign on to the road. Two years, two years I've been emailing and OPT comes and, you know, if we can't control it now, what's going to happen when we build it out? I don't think it's sufficient to plan and not take care of problems that already exist. Also, there's a lot of trucks coming over Claussen Mountain Road. We've had car accidents. Hazmat's been, has been called. We have accidents coming over from NYW. So I think it would be a good idea for you to foil OPT and see how that's all going down. I don't know if you're aware, South Green Bush Road has been identified as a safe passage for bikes. They actually made a cut through so they don't have to go on 303. And now you're going to have bikes competing with the trucks and the cars, and we can't even walk on our road. And if you, if you can take a moment, drive down a road, you can't even stay on the road. We have buses stopping, and that doesn't even matter. That's the actual bus stops of about the 35 children that live on our road. And we have the trucks between three and five a day. I watch them, I count them. I have hundreds of videos. I have hundreds of pictures. I can send them to any of you. I think that all loaning bays should be enclosed. I'm worried about the wildlife. I also want to bring up that TRC actually did an air quality control sampling in 2017 and found that acetylene was very high outside of state standards, and it was blamed on the trucks on 303. How is that going to affect, how are these going to affect that? I would like to know when the last time the water was inspected at the current location? How will it be inspected in the future? And how will everyone's wells be inspected? There has to be a starting point. You know, just going by the seats of our pants, it's not working anymore. The intersection coming off of South Green Bush onto 303 is not conducive to truck traffic. You cannot even turn a truck. You actually have to swing the truck out and then to go right. It's a, you can't get one truck per light. We can't even get through our own blocks. We can't even use our own blocks. You know, the tax amounts that we're all paying is ridiculous. I would like to ask that you do not allow any variances, have them build within the code, and think about the residents. Thank you for your time.
How do you spell your last name?
It's spelled C-A-N-I-Z-A. Good evening. I echo everything with a, every, I'm sorry. I echo everything that everybody else here has.
Wait a second, what's your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I live on 18 Spruce Street in Orangeburg.
Thank you.
Yes. So I live between 303 and Green Bush Avenue. I'm echoing what everybody else is saying in terms of the traffic. But in addition to that, the way in which Spruce Street is, there's no traffic light, right? So you have to access 303 through a stop sign. So if I'm trying to commute left, I'm dealing with a lot of ongoing traffic, you know, a lot of traffic on 303 in the mornings. I am concerned that if I commute going southbound to that light where that is, already there is a lot of traffic when I commute in the mornings because of, I guess, the people from NICE PAC leaving in the mornings. So I think that obviously with this volume, it would increase that traffic jam in the mornings and, you know, make my commute more inconvenient. I am also concerned, in addition to that, that I have three children who like to play outside when the weather is nice. Usually, one of the few ways in which we can access that trail is through, we all have to access it through 303. So one of the few ways that you can do it without, you know, getting hit by a car is through that light as well. So our kids would actually have to ride the bike, go through that traffic light to then be able to access that trail, that lovely trail behind the loof. You know, so anyway, you know, that would be the other, you know, the other issue would happen as well. My third concern is health issues. I recently battled with breast cancer with no family history of it. I'm 48 years old, and I'm very concerned about what the health repercussions might be in this. I'm not trying to discourage businesses here. I just think that our area is a very residential area, and it's just not a good place for it. That's it. Thank you.
Brendan Cahill.
How you doing? I'm actually from Senator Carlucci's office. He couldn't be here. He was doing a coronavirus informational thing. I sent me instead. Sorry. We've heard some concerns in our office about this. We wrote a letter just kind of detailing that. It's more or less echoing what everyone else has said, but overdevelopment continues to be an issue in Rockland County. We've been facing that for many years. Should this project move forward, it would greatly impede quality of life in the surrounding community. Residents have contacted my office with concerns regarding increased traffic, noise pollution, and accidents on roads that are shared with cyclists and pedestrians. The environmental impact of this project is also considerable. The warehouse's location near the Claussen Mountain Park in the Spark Hill Creeks poses several environmental concerns, including its impact on wildlife and wetlands. The Rockland County Department of Planning has raised some concerns, including in their most recent review dated February 26, 2020. These include the need for further review from the county highway department and the county division of environmental resources. This may negatively impact the suburban makeup of this area as well as the surrounding environment. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Brendan, do you want to submit that to the record?
Yeah, I want to make some edits to it. Can I submit it tomorrow? Through email?
Yeah, you can email it.
All right, thank you.
Alain Amayaco.
Hi, my name is Alain Amayaco. I live at 577 Green Bush Road. To me, this is just an obvious, blatant, massive, excessive, irresponsible, and I love that we're disrespectful to the neighbors to promote. We don't even know what the future tenants, who the future tenants will be, and we don't know what the use in the future will be. And, you know, there's that old adage, build it and they will come. And I think that this is just a perfect example of laying that out there and irresponsibly seeing what happens. You know, once you have that many trucks, who, who monitors them? Nobody. Nobody's going to count. It's 80 one day, it's 100 another day. If you double that, it's 200, but maybe it was really 120 and then it's 240. You know, nobody is really doing that. And a study over two days after all this time, I don't know, to me, that just doesn't seem really efficient, in my opinion. I also am concerned when I hear things like not necessarily going to affect wells. And we discourage, will discourage the use of a word, of a road. You know, those are just ridiculously arbitrary words in such an important decision, and they really shouldn't even be entered into consideration. I would hope that an independent traffic study is done, and I would hope that because this board requested it, no other outside consultant should have to deem that that's necessary. If you're requesting it, it should, it should happen. And I would also really hope that the LLC is really seriously looked into because that's huge. And that, that's something that is new to me tonight, and, you know, shame on me maybe for not reading that in the disclosure, but I think it's something that really needs to be looked into. So I think you guys have a lot, a lot to consider, and I hope that, you know, the residents and the residential neighborhood of Green Bush Road will be considered your first priority. Thank you.
Matt Fishman.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Fishman. I'm familiar with a lot of you. I have to do a lot of work.
Write your address, please.
You have what, sir?
242 South Green Bush Road. I've had to fight for over a year to put two feet of fill in, and I don't see how they can go above the variances, why there are variances. If that's the law, that should be the law. That's the limit. They mentioned something about if you have shallow wells. We have shallow wells. I have a shallow well. My family drinks over shallow well water. The owner controlled the traffic study. So he told the company when to do it, and then he owns the property and tells the people when to lighten their loads. That doesn't seem like a really good traffic study. The streets are too small. My kid rides a bike here. I ride bikes. There's no room. And when, in front of 242 South Green Bush Road, my house, if an 18-wheeler passes, I can take a picture. I have one. I can submit it. I'm yesterday. They cross over the double yellow every time they drive on it. They have to. They have to cross over the double yellow because the street is not wide enough. There's no room for people like kids or anyone on a bike. The trucks without lights. I ride my bike, and when I ride my bike, I notice them, when they truck those trucks back and forth, at night, they don't hook the lights up. They just truck them back and forth with no reverse lights, no brake lights, nothing. They just bang them out back and forth, back and forth after hours. I've seen it. I sat there and just sat on the grass and watched it and told my son, watch out for this. You see that truck has no reverse lights and no brake lights. No broken down trucks were discussed. How is this volume of trucks, but no broken down trucks were discussed ever in any plans? Where they would be fixed, in the parking lot, on site, are they being towed off? You talked about the storage you want, the people you want to get in, not the people that you'll accept when you need the money. What we want and what we accept is very different alike. We all know that. The noise of the trucks dropping and dragging, I could hear it from my house to 242. I can't imagine how loud it is right next to there. You hear everything with that mountain. It's, it's just a wall, a rock wall. Everything bounces off it. And the trucks still use the streets. I know there's a sign that says not to go there. I know the owner tells them not to go there, but they go there. And my kid's on his bike there. I'm walking my dog. You can't walk your dog along that street when there's trucks. It's just not possible. And then at the end of it, when it reaches the Claussen Mountain Road, it tightens up there, and there's a turn there. Nothing's fitting through there. That's pretty much it. I mean, trucks do use that road. Don't get me wrong. I don't care what any study says. We all live on that road and we all see trucks. They come from both directions, day and night. And then what happens is, when they realize sometimes they can't, they turn around in the neighbor's driveway. They back up. Thank you.
Barry Saitel, your last one.
Barry Saitel, 210 South Green Bush. I want to talk about the spirit of things here because we can get down into specifics and all, but the spirit of everybody that's here is obviously upset about a project of this magnitude. And I've submitted a lot of information by myself and through our attorney on this project. And I don't want to split your hairs, but I respectfully disagree with the synopsis of the overlay zone. Because we can't delineate a line that says, oh, you're in the zone or you're not. Specifically, if we read it, and I've read it 15 times, many times, there is the delineated section, and then there's the language. There's a provision in there that specifically says that, all right? And if you read the language, and you've read it as many of the times that I have, you get that distinct feeling that, hey, it's talking about this. You know, the overlay zone doesn't get into different tax lots. That was written in Ms. Lavin's letter, all right? It was talking about property and parcel. And if any of the property or any of a parcel is in the zone, the whole property is in the zone. It doesn't get into tax lots, it's parcels and property. But besides that, there's language in it that states 13.2 threat. Mountain View Avenue in Green Bush by name epitomizes the scenic nature of Route 303, overshadowed as hit by Claussen Mountain and a chain of state, county, and town parks extended to Route 303. 13.5A, protect and buffer the view shot of the Palisades including Claussen Fountain and other natural areas is located in a series of state, county, and town parks which were on a consistent basis. This is just two provisions. There's many other provisions in the spirit and the context of that overlay zone that should be applied either in whole or in part to a warehouse as massive as this particular project. I got to move on with that. I'll submit something into the committee, to the board, on that. But I have a contaminated well. It's on the first one across from the north entrance. Besides, there is a provision, I will find it in the zoning, that states that, I believe it's 100 feet that an entrance to a commercial property can't be across from a residential. I'll find it and I'll send it into the board. They're not doing it now. We don't need to, 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 to get too specific, but you've got 56 bays. Let's do the arithmetic. We set a half hour, even at an hour turn per, per truck. You're talking hundreds of vehicles. We set a half hour, even at an hour turn per, per truck. We're talking hundreds of vehicles a day. That's madness. That's crazy. And that's insanity, and I lived there. These are bad landlords. They are constantly going against the R A rules, going from eleven o'clock at night to six in the morning, back and forth to Nice Path. And Nice Path, when you come out of there a lot and try to make that right on the north Green Bush, you can't without crossing the road. It's impossible. Doesn't happen. Alright? Let's not forget what the architect said. It's a high, at a prior meeting, it's a high value, high volume warehouse, forty feet highs. We need forty feet, I won't. That's the way we do it today. Quick turning. So for them to say that, oh, it won't be a problem, there won't be high traffic, we're talking hundreds, and hundreds probably, maybe even a thousand or two trucks a day.
Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am. Major David Andrews for the record, please.
Allison Sullivan, forty-two Arthur Street, Plowville. I just had a couple of questions.
What was that, forty-two?
Yes, Arthur. What is stopping them from changing the use once the project is done? Is there anything in place? It's L I zone, I think, right? Which would allow pretty much anything, any kind of manufacturing. Can they change its manufacturing once they are approved for this project? And how many variances are required and what are they? And then actually, I wanted to read something that was in a sustainable study done on Route 303 back in two thousand and two. Traffic safety. This was a Route 303 Sustainable Development Study. It says traffic accidents are concentrated at those intersections where both volumes and turning movements are highest. For example, the Route 303 intersections with the Route fifty-nine ramps, Bradley Parkway, Yuri Street, Mountain View Avenue, is one of those, and they are... All of these locations have been previously identified as New York State DOT as ha- high accident locations. So this is already an issue, and on top of that, we're going to add all of these trucks. If you're ever on Route, I live, I get on to Route 303 from Yuri Street and go south. Anytime you hit Mountain View Avenue, if I'm in the left lane going south on Route 303 and a truck is coming out of Green Bush Road, I have to back my car up so that truck can make a right-hand turn going north. How is this going to work? Is that intersection able to handle that kind of volume? I don't think it is, and I think that should be a major question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Major David Andrews for the record, please.
Vincent Loopy, one oh-six Bruce Street, Plowville. So I, I agree with most of the speakers about air quality, traffic, water pollution. I'd like to just add a few things with the traffic. Using their conservative numbers of eighty trucks, and it's probably going to double, hundred and sixty trucks with an average length of fifty feet. It's about mile and a half worth of trucks added to that traffic light. There's, as this other resident stated, there's no easy way to head south on 303 without hitting that light. So add all those trucks, we will be waiting at that light for endless hours, in addition to bus traffic that are picking up our, our children. In addition to that, like other residents mentioned, the safest way, because there's no sidewalks on both 303 or Green Bush Road, to get to the rail track is to go through that intersection. When trucks turn, there's blind spots. They're going to run over a kid and kill him. They're going to run over me and kill me because I walk there often. It's an unsafe area, like another resident stated. They do it without lights at night, and the rail track doesn't close at night. You go there when it's warm up during any time of the year. With the water pollution, I think environmental studies should be done. The Spark Hill Creek, which is designated as a trout spawning creek, is right across the street. It's also a customer of ours. I would like to hear how many basins are proposed. I know the resident mentioned that. I think the traffic study for two days is definitely insufficient. They should do it at least a week. I think that, that's basically, I'll, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Steve Holland, once again. I noticed a number of people made mentions of Z B A, and I realize that's outside of the purview of the planning board. Zoning issues are not, are not within your purview, but the plans should have a bulk table on them indicating the bulk of the project, as long as any zoning variances that the applicant will be looking for. It's a basic information, it's basic information, and must be on the site plan. So I would ask if the applicant is making a modification to the plans, a supplement to the plans, at their most revised plan, including with, with the zoning intervention under the law.
Anyone else? Last call. Anyone else?
Can I make a motion for the public? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would suggest we take a five-minute break. Obviously, if you want to close the public portion, we'd be effective.
I make the motion for closing the public portion. Are we going to go through questions? Do you want to close it, or do you want to go through answers first, before you officially close it? I think this is the way we've done it, but it may make sense to keep it open, ask questions. People may have questions based upon the answers that they hear. But I should just say, I don't think that there can be any secret done today, because the E A F has not been approved by the building affected. So I want to know that nothing's final going to happen today. Everyone will have to come back, and they'll have a chance to make their comments together, whether they're not.
I was going to talk to Mr. Brenner about that. Being at the full E A F facility review, they were asking for a no traffic study.
Traffic consultant?
No, consultant, yes. Did you, we wanted to ask for a continuation?
As we will.
Okay, so you're formally asking for a continuation?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. What that means is that there will be no further action taken tonight. The application, the applicant has been given a lot of questions from the board and from you, mostly in respect to environmental and with the traffic study, and they asked for a continuation. What they're going to do is they're going to get the answers that we are requiring from them, and then they will, will come back at another time. As for the timeframe, I don't know when they're going to come back. Everybody will be notified as they were for this meeting. They will also be notified for the next meeting. So I just wanted to let you know, you know, that they're asking for a continuation. Yes, sir.
Can we maybe talk about some of the non-traffic report related things then, so it's not like a redundant thing we're doing at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think you should address the questions that they asked, and also just to clarify one thing. I think it is incumbent upon the board to do one thing, and that is to decide whether you want independent consultants. I don't think you should put that off to the next time. If you want one, you should.
We do want that. We want that.
So you have to.
Then we go back.
You have to vote on that, though.
Okay.
Before the closing of meetings.
You're asking something to evaluate the traffic study done by Dr.
Mr. Brenner, can you speak into the microphone?
You're asking for an independent traffic person to evaluate the traffic study that was done by Dr. Collins.
Correct.
We agree with that. We agree with that.
Why?
We agree with that.
Yeah, okay. So my recommendation that the plan, the, the planning board consider obtaining the services of an independent traffic consultant to review the traffic study and the comments from the agencies, and they would make a recommendation on moving forward. What direction you should go in, whether they accept it and they can defend, you know, agree with. We agree. And, or whether or not another traffic study, the one fifty-two, should be required in this application.
The way you have written here, as per my September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen letter, the board should consider the need for an independent traffic consultant to review the traffic report and the appropriateness of the use of the I T E, when used code one fifty in this application.
That's right. Will you agree?
Yes. Yes, to my personal opinion that we should have the full traffic study done by an independent. Well, I would like, yes, I would like to make a motion. Obviously, everyone here, everyone has to say, just one person.
I'll second you.
Mr. Young, do you want to, you want another study?
Yes.
They're going to do it until it makes sense. If they don't do the one fifty, it probably doesn't make sense, you know?
Well, I think that's the determination you should find out.
Want the independent, should we do the one fifty or the one fifty-two?
Correct. That is, that was my recommendation as to make a determination whether or not the traffic studies that are submitted are sufficient.
Correct.
Or should the one fifty-two be required to be done.
Correct. So I think, in, in my opinion, I think we should wait for our consultant to review the traffic study, and if he feels that the one fifty is the correct way of going.
Or whatever they're recommending, or they're finding ours, and then you review them, and then you can make another action if you deem necessary.
Okay, Mr. Dell?
No, I think we should move on to the study, but that's just.
I think the independent party should make that determination. Again, I think it only makes sense if we're going to go, if you're going to do the one fifty-two, if you're going to have to do the one fifty again, what's the point, you know? You know, I mean, why don't we just determine that?
That's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, but why don't we just, why don't we just make them do the one fifty-two instead?
Folks, can you please, we're trying to get this, we're trying to help you folks, so please don't interrupt.
It makes it very hard for us to hear up here if you guys are just talking, okay? Again, my recommendation is to have someone with the expertise to make the determination whether or not the traffic studies that have been provided are sufficient.
Correct.
If determination is made by an independent consultant that they're not sufficient, they will make recommendations on what needs to be done to obtain a sufficient study. Or your choice is to say you want the one fifty-two. My recommendation is to have an independent consultant say what information the board should be looking for.
Right. But we're hoping on the motion that Mr. Dell. Mr. Dell would like to have a new study done. Okay. Mr. Andrews, what's going on? Mr. Young says that we should look, have a consultant look at the existing report to find out if that addresses it adequately.
Or if another study.
Or if another study is required.
So what study he proposes you can make them do?
He's going to look at.
The one fifty-two?
Well, then it's pending.
You know, I'd rather just have a, a person look at and determine it, if, the person we're going to hire.
Don't make the.
I'm going to say now that you want the one fifty-two, I, I could go, I could go for that.
Unless, unless they, I haven't been willing to, to do the one fifty-two, that's different, but they haven't offered to do that at this point.
To answer the question, we would, we would do a study for one fifty-two for comparative purposes, and then with both studies done, then if you want to have an independent traffic review to say which study is appropriate, that's fine, but I think it has to, but the fact is that I am saying, if we'll do the study, I may disagree with the basic assumption of one fifty-two versus one fifty, but we're going to have, we'll use the information for one fifty-two, do the study, and then they'll come out with it. Now, it may come out that one fifty-two generates more traffic but less traffic, so I don't know what the outcome is, I think so. We'll see what, the technical board will have a combination of both sides. And then the independent study, a reviewer will make sure that we did the correct analysis, correct job, and advise the board accordingly.
And what would be the, how many days are you going to do the study for? Are you going to do it for a full week?
Well, what happened is, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about the data that we collected. Remember, you said, I said there was a, a traffic, traffic counters put on the roadway for a week's time. And then based upon that, we took a midday week to do the video game, because that showed up to be the highest day based upon that information. And it turned out one day was lighter than the other, as, as people have indicated. You may have experienced a one-day, one-day record. We did the analysis based upon the higher deck. And it was basically a big week, which, which is when you would expect the heaviest volume to occur. Usually it doesn't occur on a Monday or Friday, but occurs even Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And that's we determined based upon the counts. So I think we have enough data, and the one fifty-two category basically just says, take the, just take the information we have now and then expand it to, you look at that one fifty-two category. And I think that way the board will have a recount, it'll answer two questions. It'll answer, what's the one fifty, what's the one fifty-two? It'll give you the range of values, what could happen, and it'll also address the counts. But in the meantime, I'm going to still talk to the county about the one fifty.
Either way, whether or not you decide to go with an independent traffic study, the applicant can always do their own one fifty-two, and so if they're willing to do it, then, then you can have an independent consultant evaluate the three traffic studies.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what we, then we've been waiting to evaluate that consultant until we get it, right?
Is that what we want to do?
That, that's what we want, huh? Independent traffic, so.
Yeah, we can just go and do the one fifty-two. That's nice, and then we'll compare it to the one fifty-two we have done to find the independent part. Well, no, that's not what, that's not what is proposed. It's not the one fifty-two. Not what I was hearing. Okay. I think we should go ahead with the one fifty-two because of the nature of this development. That's my thing. In all deference to you and everything else, I think it's just good reason, belt and suspenders approach to this, because of the impact it has on the community, and if nothing else, the community itself.
Thank you. The other, the other question would be, is it, when the one fifty-two report comes in?
Then we can hire a consultant to compare the two.
Right, and you can make that, alright, we can make the determination now, so it doesn't delay a whole other hearing.
Given the complexity that we've heard on both sides, I think this board needs an independent consultant. I think you need to appoint one right now. And then if you want to have them do, start immediately doing another study, you can do that. If you want to wait to see if they think it's necessary, you can do that. But I think we're at the point, Mr. Dell or someone else, make a motion, vote on it, and if it, if it doesn't pass, then someone else make a motion. Mr. Dell, you feel strongly about it, make your motion.
Make a motion, then we do the one fifty-two study with an independent, independent expert.
Consultant review of that.
No, I think Mr. Dell.
Independent study, want to be clear?
No, I'm sorry, I appreciate that.
Is, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a second.
All favor of the town, the board hiring an independent consultant to do a I T E, when used code one fifty-two for traffic study. Aye. You opposed? Yes, I heard my name. I, I, well, even if I vote, we still have the number, because the only thing I'm saying is, I didn't want to go, go to study. He's willing to do it, and then we can get a consultant. If you want to have. If you want to have an independent study for 152, then we'll go ahead and do it.
Take down who voted yes, who voted no.
We have to do an official vote.
All right, so who pays for that, sir?
It's going to be the applicant.
Applicant's expense.
Mr. Young and I voted against it. The rest of the board voted for it.
Can I have a question? Would the county ask the consultant to indicate whether or not 150 or 152 is appropriate?
Do we have our consultant look at that? Otherwise, if they do 152 and they feel that 150 was appropriate, to let us know?
How about they do both, 150 and 152? And then they can give their comment about which one's appropriate.
Okay.
Still, they can provide, because part of the scope of work when we reach out to them will be the analysis, comparison of the two studies.
Correct. But we are going to do the study.
Yeah, yes. And the comparison.
By applying and... Okay, just wanted to make sure. Yes. Okay?
So you want them to do a 150 and a 152 and then compare it to your 150 or 152?
I think what the board's saying, do the 152. And then also compare it to the 150 we produced.
All right.
Or they're just redoing a study a second time. They're either going to confirm... But the answer is, the fact is that I don't mind them saying 152 or 150 is the appropriate one. Just compare it, that's all.
Okay, I think this got confused again. We need to know what the board is voting on. I think it started out with the 152.
Right.
And then there was some discussion about doing both and then about comparing. Mr. Dell, why don't you state what you want and then let's have a revote about whether the majority agrees with that.
At least I want to be the 152. I think both basically, both should be done for just because for everybody's protection, et cetera. Because even from the applicant's point of view, if there's contention about this and we have an independent expert doing both of them, then I think everyone is... Has been able to certainly say they've done their due diligence.
And then we want the independent analysis of which one that expert makes is appropriate.
I think we should do an independent... Actually, what I really feel we should do is an independent review of... An independent study of both the 150 and the 152. Because I'm sure they can use the same data for both, if I'm not mistaken.
They reckon. They would use the same base data volume and then categorize.
Right, and they would then do an additional calculations.
For the 152.
Exactly. So I don't see that as being a major impediment. I want to know how the other board members feel, but that's my thing.
Is there a motion?
That... My motion is that we hire an independent expert to do both a 150 and a 152 traffic study. I think Mr. Boring seconded it.
I second.
Again, oh, you...
I just wanted to do the 152. I mean, they can compare. The 152, to me, is a... It's kind of a moot point. I mean, we've already seen it. I don't necessarily see the other guys coming up differently.
It's their data.
It's the 152.
Folks, please, we're trying to resolve here. I know, we're just... Mr. Young?
Aye. Yeah.
You go along, Mr. Brenner. Okay. Mr. Young?
opposed? I have a statement.
Okay. And Mr. Bond?
I've said I go for it, so I'll go for it.
What? Are you for it or against it?
I'm going for it, yeah.
So what are you doing now?
Doing both 150 and 152.
150, 152.
Traffic study and report, back to us.
Okay, so who said no now?
Hands up, who said no?
Okay.
Who said no?
Warren and Young.
Do we want that expert here with the team so they can answer questions? Are they going to be... Are they just going to give us a report or are they going to show up and sit here so they can answer questions?
Oh, wants to report. Folks, please! Folks, please!
So part of the scope of work would be that they will make an appearance when the report is presented to the board.
Right. And we assume, of course, that the art experts will provide them the information that kind of matters so they have time to do it.
If you tell me who the reviewer, the board chooses, I'll get all the raw data to them so they have the basis of the information.
So all the data you sent?
Sure. So raw data to be provided by the...
Yeah, if they need more data, the raw data, we'll be glad to give them, including the videos.
Just one other question, that is. Yeah, I heard the concerns about the driveway, the opposite that residence driveway, that's the way it appears on the plan. I wasn't putting that anywhere. I don't think we talked about this last time you guys were here, about reducing the size of the building, so it's... That you guys can revisit. I mean, if you squared it up and moved that parking lot down, that would go a long way of helping the situation now. Just as you mentioned that last time.
Yes.
Suggestion, if you have anything about it, so.
You guys have all the concerns.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, it's okay.
Oh, it isn't?
That access to the... I think if you... I'll take a look.
Wait, guys, you're talking over each other.
Sorry.
Mr. McCrory, you may...
I was just... I'll take a look. Please, for comments. Yes. Okay, obviously, look at all the other concerns that the board members from the community spoke about. And I know that's one of the diligence. But I just want to put it in the record. I know, I'm trying to say, hey, we don't need to look at it.
Sure.
Okay? I have a second, one question. What are your hours of operations?
I'll get back to that. Every tenant is different, I'll get back to you over that.
But the board gives us...
Yeah, we'll set what's... We'll set what is it.
Well, I want to know what they work now.
Okay, they just...
Mr. Chairman, also, if I can remind the applicant, perhaps they can address all the plan comments that have been in my previous letters.
Sure.
When you do come back.
Yep, we have to revise the plan thing.
Yes, so this way the community sees that they've been addressed.
You got it. Sir, may I warn the... I had to ask about the filing on western side, not eastern side, I think. The western side? Yeah, there's access all around the buildings through the south, east, and north, and then the access to the west is the green... I know, we're trying to keep you up Rainbow Road. Right, and I don't think there's any... Well, there's... I don't think there's any other requirements. I would ask, Gene, does the fire inspector have any input on this?
Yes, he does have input on this, and that was not one of his concerns because it's a public road. It's a public life.
It was just, I just wanted to...
He will, so.
Sir.
Sir, please, thank you.
So I will make sure that Mr. Bettman is made aware of that comment.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion for both public portion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much, and I'm...
That petition was provided to, it's just late, you can't sign it, if you'd like to sign it, we have it, we can locate it.
Okay.
I wanted to make a motion to accept the minutes. Oh, the minutes. Well, you guys got to give the minutes. I'm going to listen here.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you have a motion during the meeting?
Motion, adjourn.
Ken, is it second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bond, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.